And welcome to the Grand Prairie City Council Meeting for Monday, May 14th, 2012. I'd ask everyone in attendance to join us in singing "O Canada."
(Music) 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 (Music)
Thank you to the National Film Board of Canada for the images of our country and to our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio rendition. So we'll move on to the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Could I have a motion for that set of minutes? Councillor Crokin.
Thank you Mayor Given. I move minutes of the regular board meeting of council held April 30th, 2012.
Thank you very much, Councillor Crokin. Any discussion or debate on this set of minutes? Councillor Radburn.
Thank you Mayor Given. Just a correction, the Grand Spirit Meeting was a management committee meeting, not the annual general meeting. There was an annual report, so there was that connection probably, but it was a management committee meeting.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councillor Radburn. We've got that catch. Any other discussion or debate? Errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries and bring us to the adoption of the agenda. Could we have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented? Councillor Gustafson.
Thanks Mayor Given. I'll move the council adopt the agenda as presented.
Thanks very much, Councillor Gustafson. Any discussion or debate on the agenda? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. And that motion carries. This brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda, which is the opportunity for anyone in the community who wish to address council on any community-related matter to come forward. I don't see anybody. I think the warm summer weather has kept everybody outdoors and so we'll move on from the delegation portion of the agenda into public hearings, which we had none. Unfinished business was next. We had no unfinished business in the last meeting and that would take us into item 8.1, Reports. Councillor Rice.
I would move first reading of bylaw C-1237B, an amendment to the municipal development plan.
Thanks very much, Councillor Rice. Maybe we could just have a brief introduction from administration. Mr. McIntyre.
Mayor Given, bylaw C-1237B is an amendment to the MDP to, I guess, formalize council's intent to work with the disabled and handicapped to ensure that the planning document advocates for and provides, encourages barrier-free access in the course of development generally.
Okay. Thanks very much, Mr. McIntyre.
Is it?
Councillor Rice has the motion for first reading. It's not really open for discussion and debate before we've had first reading. Councillor Rice.
I know, I just want to answer a clarification question. My understanding was it was only for city-owned facilities, Michael.
That's correct. This is the emphasis, yes. Very good. Okay. So, motion for first reading. I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor Rice.
I move that council establish Monday, June 11th, 2012, at 6:30 PM at city council chambers be the date, time, and location for public hearing purposes for bylaw C-1237.
Thanks very much, Councillor Rice. Any discussion or debate as to the date, time, and location of that public hearing? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. And bring us on to the committee business and item 9.1, Public Works Committee. Councillor Gustafson. Can I have a set of minutes for us?
I will move the council adopt the minutes of the Public Works Committee meeting held May 1st, 2012.
Thanks very much, Councillor Gustafson. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor Gustafson, I think you had a bunch of motions.
Thank you Mayor Given. I'll move the council approve the addition of the 2012 capital plan for 505,000 for the Bear Creek Slope Failure Recovery Project, fully funded by the 2011 Northern Alberta Disaster Recovery Program.
Thanks very much, Councillor Gustafson. Did you have any detailed add?
Just when it was really wet there two years, last year, we had a number of Bear Creek failures and this is the way that the province is going to help us repair those areas along the creek.
Thanks very much, Councillor Gustafson. Any discussion or debate? Questions or comments on the motion? Councillor Wong.
Yes, thank you Mayor Given. I was wondering if Councillor Gustafson could be more specific on the locations that are going to be repaired?
Councillor Gustafson? You'll have to hit your microphone there.
The areas that we are approving tonight are Elks, right beside the Elks Hall there, 106th Street and 108th Avenue, Center 2000, there's a slide there, 102nd Street and 89th Avenue Slope Failure, the walking trail east of 75th Avenue, South Bear Creek Road, and 68th Avenue Slope Failure Project.
Well, thank you very much.
Councillor McLean.
Thank you Mayor Given. And I'm glad the government jumped in on this because of the wet season last year. And I know some of it is done and some of the areas and some they're still doing. They're not all done yet, right? Councillor Gustafson?
They've done so a few emergency repairs, but basically nothing's been done yet as far as I understand it.
Okay. And I'm looking forward to this. Just shows if you build too close to the banks that you could have problems. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Gustafson.
Thank you Mayor Given. I'll move the council approve a request to extend the period for subdivision approval and endorsement for the subdivision application Z-100008, southwest of 27th, 71, 6th, west of the 6th, for an extension period to expire on May 6th, 2013.
Thanks very much, Councillor Gustafson. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor Gustafson.
Thank you. I'll move the council allocate $50,000 from the future expenditure reserve to undertake an internal traffic, parking, and pedestrian assessment of the community knowledge campus. Now, as we all know, Eastlake Center's been a huge, huge hit other than the parking, so this is the way that we're going to make sure we're parking as many people in there for as long as possible and then be able to get in and out of there as easy and quick as possible.
Thanks, Councillor Gustafson. Any discussion, debate, questions, or comments on the motion? Councillor McLean.
Thank you Mayor Given. Councillor Gustafson, this study would be like maybe where we might add a few more parking lots, the best location there, or is it for parking? Because we know it's very limited there right now.
Well, the school's going in there and I'll look for some help from Mr. McIntyre on this one. If you could, please.
Mr. McIntyre.
Mayor Given, I think the essence of the story is that although the long-range planning for the CKC site was done some time ago in terms of for the Coke Center and St. Joe's High School and Gymnix and so on, the province's planning in terms of its engineering studies and so on for the current high school proposal did not include, the project scope did not include looking at the traffic impacts on 68th Avenue or the surrounding road network and consequently, city transportation engineering wanted to make sure the council was fully aware of and prepared for and that the province would have the benefit of that information before committing to a final design.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Radburn.
That clarified things. I was going to mention that as well. I think part of it is that the high school is, has a greater capacity than initially intended, but also just to look at the traffic flow and parking and even pedestrian, I guess, traffic along there. I think it's, I really support this investment. I think it's a time to take a look, to see what we do need, what we do have, and see that things will work even more efficiently when the new school comes on board. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councillor Radburn. Councillor Wong.
Thank you very much. Either Mr. McIntyre or Councillor Gustafson can answer this. Is that project or is that study going to affect the lights that are scheduled to go up right in front of St. Joe's?
Mr. McIntyre.
That information, as I understand it, will be important to the way the lights, that intersection is designed with the lights. I don't think there's any question that the lights will be required or the signals will be required at that intersection. I think the overall objective is to make sure the internal design of the roadway, parking and so on, and how it connects to the intersection are done so that, A, we understand what the limitations might be and secondly, what engineering, what detailed engineering might need to be done to make it all integrate and work smoothly.
Do we have some kind of idea of the timing of how long it's going to take for the study? It was my understanding that those lights were scheduled for this year.
Mr. McIntyre.
The idea is to get this traffic impact analysis done as soon as possible. It's not my understanding, according to transportation engineering, that it would delay the signals going in. They are separate projects, but I think it's important to understand that one could have a bearing on the other.
Great. That's the information I was looking for. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks very much. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor Gustafson, you're not finished yet.
Sure, one more here. Thank you Mayor Given. I'll move the council approve the transportation infrastructure improvements as proposed for the Musquesee Park main entrance at 102nd Avenue as well as the entrance on 105th Avenue.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councillor Gustafson. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Was there anything else that you wanted to highlight in that set of public works minutes, Councillor Gustafson?
Well, we had a lengthy discussion on the Musquesee Park entrance, as of course, and we will identify a really nice entrance feature to put there eventually. That's really about all.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councillor Gustafson.
Couldn't agree more.
I believe that brings us to the CDC meeting. And Councillor Crokin.
Thank you Mayor Given. I move the council adopt the minutes of the Community Development Committee meeting held on May 1st, 2012.
Thanks very much, Councillor Crokin. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Councillor Crokin, did you have any business arising? I don't think you did note at that meeting, did you?
I'd just like to make one notation that PACE was there and gave a presentation, which was Ms. Jackie Aiken-Kish and Kay Taylor and Mrs. Neighbors with PACE. They reported to the committee on PACE programs which help children, adults, and families who have experienced sexual abuse and trauma. The delegation reviewed the Who Do You Tell program, the PACE training series, and the women's support group. It was noted that training sessions are offered three times a year, so it's a very, very worthwhile endeavor they're doing in our city. So, that's everything, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. Thanks very much, Councillor Crokin. I believe that brings us then to 100th Anniversary Committee and Councillor O'Toole.
Thank you much, Mayor Given.
Pardon me? Oh, sorry, Councillor. Sorry, I had my next two committees reversed there. Excuse me. Councillor Rice for 100th Anniversary Committee.
I would move that council adopt the minutes of the 100th Anniversary Committee meeting held on May 3rd, 2012 with the following change under Reports 2.1. It's AUMA to meet with Alberta MPs, Members of Parliament, and they are there as we speak in Ottawa and we've asked them to discuss with the Members of Parliament the cancelling of the Cultural Capitals Grant.
Excellent. Thanks very much for that catch. Councillor Rice? Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor Rice, you had a couple items of business.
Move that council approve in principle the concept of a contract between the city and the Grand Prairie Regional Tourism Association for the selection, provision, and sale of city 100th Anniversary souvenirs. In speaking to that motion, we were very excited that Grand Prairie Regional Tourism has stepped up like this and we think it'll be a huge asset to the 100th Anniversary celebrations.
Excellent. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor Rice.
I move that council appoint Councillor O'Toole to the Anderson Hall Site Redevelopment Committee. In speaking to it, the college has taken down Anderson Hall and so they have a strip that they are now determining what they're going to do with it and they want it to be something that could be a legacy for the 100th Anniversary. So they asked the 100th Anniversary Committee for a representative and the committee agreed unanimously that we would never find a better one than Councillor O'Toole.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councillor Rice. So, this is the recommendation from the committee then?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Anything else you want to highlight in that set of minutes, Councillor Rice?
No. As I mentioned, we were very, very, it was a huge blow when the federal government canceled the Cultural Capital Grant. We had to do a shift in our planning. Fortunately, we started early enough that we can make those shifts. The committee unanimously agreed we need to keep the production of a high-end history book and a homecoming celebration. We will then be talking to the various community groups who are eligible to apply for a couple of other grants that they can, you know, that they can access. Mrs. Harper has been extremely helpful in searching out alternatives and we will look at planning events around what community groups are prepared to come forward with and what grants they can access.
Excellent. Thanks very much.
But we're still going to need money.
No question. No question. Okay. Thanks very much, Councillor Rice. Councillor Radburn, do you have a question on that? You do? On the minutes? On the minutes?
Yep. So Helen or David somebody, can you just tell me a little bit about this community play? And it has a significant budget. It says that it's self-contained. Who's, where are the funds coming from?
Councillor Rice?
They are raising on their own. They had, of course, asked for some money through the Cultural Capitals Grant should we be successful and they've been advised that we have no funding to give them. It's being spearheaded by Annie Smith from the college and Wayne Ailing. And so, they will have to go out and fundraise again as some of the groups that I mentioned earlier.
Thank you. Okay. Thanks very much, Councillor Radburn. Councillor Rice? Okay, this time I think I got it right. Councillor O'Toole, the Municipal Government Day Team.
Thank you much, Mayor Given. I like to, I make a recommendation, the council adopt the minutes of the Municipal Government Day Team meeting held on May 4th, 2012.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Any errors or omissions? Anybody caught? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor O'Toole, anything that you care to highlight in that set of minutes?
Just since the meeting, we've launched the I Love Grand Prairie Kids Art Contest and Mr. Olinger can comment on that with the schools.
Mr. Olinger, do you have a microphone anywhere nearby there?
Certainly I do. So, we've launched the art contest this year. We've, with the public and separate and local, other local schools, what we've done is we've turned it up a notch this year and had the opportunity for digital art this time in terms of PowerPoints or slide presentations or movies. In addition, students can still do the traditional artwork that they might have in the past and so we've been working with the two school boards and the other school boards in the region as well as the Centre for Creative Arts.
Excellent. Thanks very much, Mr. Olinger.
And just, thank you. Thank you very much, David. And the Grand Prairie Get Active 2012 Amazing Race is looking to be something that will be talked about for at least a year and we're going to have a number of rest stops and points where an active process will be demanded from us, members on council and guests. So, that's where we're at.
Looks like an exciting day. We're looking forward to it at the end of the month. Councillor McLean, did you have a question?
Thank you Mayor Given. Councillor O'Toole, I notice too for parking at a Catholic church, which I don't think a lot of people realize, so hopefully that's promoted in the paper for parking. There's about 900 stalls there, so that'd be a big venue for people to park because there's limited parking down there for this event.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councillor McLean. If there wasn't anything further, Municipal Government Day Team, and that's all of our committee business. We had no items of correspondence. We had no delegations tonight and there were no notices of motion, so that would bring us to council member reports and Councillor O'Toole, I believe he had two, the Philip J. Currie Dinosaur Museum and the Regional Archives.
Yes, thanks very much again. The Archives will be having a film and story tea. Traditionally, we've been having these sort of events in the evening and it just seemed to drag out a little bit too late at night and some of the people were falling asleep before the stories were all done. So that'll be held on September 22nd and it'll go from 2:00 till 4:00 and that'll be held at the museum.
Thank you.
And also the cemetery walks. It's been a walking tours. I'll give you the dates for those. They've usually been a fairly good sellout over the years and this year it's going to be Wednesday, June 13th and it'll start at 7:00 PM. Also July 11th, 7:00 start again, and August 8th, 7:00 start. And I'll just go on to the Philip J. Currie.
Please.
I just like to bring up a few items that have happened in the last month or so. Dr. Currie has been given the honor of being bestowed an honorary Explorers Club Medal. This is the highest honor of the prestigious 108-year-old club. Some of the people that have been given this over the years is American Robert Perry and Matthew Henson in the 1909, the first people to reach the North Pole. And that's just the start. What else we got here? We got the coin that's been out, the dinocoin. The city, or number of people from the city, including different organizations have been trying to order these coins and we've been told that they've been sold out. So, if you get one, consider yourself very lucky. There was approximately, I think, 12,000 of them that were initially printed. So, they are a done deal. If you get one, you're lucky. And just a couple other things on, what have we got here? There's going to be a vintage tractor revolution on May 26th, this coming Saturday. They have over 50 tractors that are going to be used in a parade and there's over 21 sponsors that signed up and have had at least one tractor. They're going to have a parade around the Wembley area and that's one of the fundraising ideas that they've got for the Wembley area. The Dino Ball is continuing to work and get people to come, invited guests as in VIPs and there's a guy named Nicholas Cage that's been asked and he's got an interest in dinosaurs and he's checking his schedule, so. I didn't really want to say it out loud.
He's teasing us?
But, he's been asked. It's up to him to say yes or no.
From a mind guy.
And he's going to be here too. Matthew Gray-Gubler will be here. And that's about it. I got, Helen.
Anything else, Councillor?
I want to.
Don't let it get you off track.
Yeah, no. I wanted to bring up the library board at this present time. The library staff have got a learning, language learning program over there and they actually won an award this year. It's called Mango and they were actually teaching Pirate to some students on a Saturday afternoon. They got dressed up and they actually beat out Edmonton and Calgary and all the other public libraries in the province. So, hats off to the staff at the Grand Prairie Public Library for teaching Pirate.
They're the best pirate speakers in Grand Prairie.
Aye, laddie. Thank you very much.
And on that note, Councillor Rice, I think we'll move to council member roundtable and we'll start with you.
Okay. I attended Recycle Plus to view their new sorting machine, which is absolutely phenomenal. Anyone taking bottles in, I think, what did they do? 190 bottles in three minutes or so. It was just a phenomenal number and it sorts them. It's actually worth taking a trip just to see the machine work. It's incredible. I attended the Heritage School Fair and excellent remarks, Councillor Radburn. Some of those projects were just fascinating. I could have spent all day there just looking at the projects and there was busloads of them came in from Peace River and so on. It was very good. I attended the Grow United Breakfast put on by United Way and you can just see the, you know, this community has a phenomenal track record of supporting the local charities. And on Saturday, I attended at the Eminem Cobblestone location to flip burgers for Crohn's and Colitis Foundation and Councillor O'Toole and I had just an awesome system happening, man. So, a very good project and it was steady. You didn't, there was no downtime happening there. So, those were my activities.
Excellent. Thanks very much, Councillor Rice. And we'll move to Councillor Crokin.
Thanks Mayor Given. On April 11th, I was at an economic development conference with Brian Gavin of the department and we got an awful lot of good ideas working towards an economic profile of Grand Prairie in hard copy. As the regional municipality of Wood Buffalo has, they do have a little more money than we do, but it does profile and shows information on everything from their United Way. They got $4.4 million donated to the United Way from their community, so it's very nice to have something like that. The 22nd, I attended the Peace Library meeting in Grand Prairie. On the 21st, again, I was emcee for the Earth Day Habitat for Humanity along with Councillor Rice. She was the auctioneer. And we raised, or they raised $6,000, thanks to Amy from Aquaterra. On the 26th, I attended Alberta Library Conference in Jasper and two of our trustees of the library board were also along there with us and our CEO of Peace Library System, Linda Duplessis. And there are an awful lot of great things happening for our libraries and we have to sell them a little more in our communities because kids are sure learning from going to the library. On the 30th, I attended Protective Services Workshop in Nisku along with RCMP Staff Sergeant Ray Noble and Protective Services Director Bill Walker. The name of the conference was, question was, ask your police and fire chiefs the right questions to get the right. Right Answers." Well, Bill was giving me an elbow quite a bit through the whole session, and one of the key questions was, "How many police and firefighters do you really need?" And I got a different kind of answer from Bill and Mr. Ray Noble. But, it's a great discussion by the researchers that did research in the greater United States and in the United Kingdom. On May 3rd, I also attended the open house for the Plus Two Bottle Depot to witness. It's called the Anchor Anderson Sorting and Counting Technology. Not just the old bottles and cans. It really does speed up the work for the staff there, and it's a great technology. I'd asked them actually to go one step farther and start crushing and sending out aluminum and ingots, but apparently it cannot happen, because they were too close to B.C., and some bottles and cans, or the aluminum might infiltrate. That was the answer. I said, "That's strange." But, I attended a Development of Peel Committee meeting on May 4th, and as other members of council, I flipped hamburgers at M&amp;M, the fundraiser, for Crohn's and Colitis, and a big hand, and thanks to the Tinworths. They have the tents set up in front of both of their locations, and it's a fun thing. And they told me that the pump there was not liquid ketchup, it was a hand cleaner. So, anyway, that was how things went for me the last couple of weeks.
Thanks very much, Counselor Crokin. Counselor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I attended the land use workshop in City Hall here, along with other members of City Council. Very informative, and look forward to the new land use bylaw coming out soon as we can. I had, we had 100th Anniversary Homecoming Subcommittee Meeting. Didn't take us long to count our money, but we're still trying. And I went this past weekend here. I was fortunate enough to go to the grad ceremonies out of the Tech Center. It always excites me to see all the beautiful kids starting a new chapter in their life. And the last couple, last week here, I've been, TSN is putting a contest on to give your community 25 grand towards, towards a capital investment in your city. So, I've started a short video in regards to that, and I'm gonna send it away. And if anybody else wants to do that, craftcelebrationtour.ca is where you can enter for that contest for your, for our community in Grand Prairie. And finally, I'd just like to say happy Mother's Day to my mom. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. May 1st, we Economic Development Advisory Committee Meeting. We talked about membership in our Industrial Attraction Strategy Ad Hoc Committee and interviewees. We had a GPRTA presentation. Ainsley joined us. She's actually a member of our committee now. May 2nd, the opening night of Short Real Film Festival. Congrats to Terry Surback and her cast of volunteers and sponsors for an excellent event. May 3rd, United Way Growing United Program and Breakfast, that's been already mentioned. And then also, I did speak on behalf of council and the mayor at the open house and tour of Recycle Plus Two's new sorting and counting technology. May 4th, I brought greetings at the Regional Heritage Fair at Montrose Cultural Center. And May 5th, I attended on behalf of our mayor and council, Grand Prairie Regional College Convocation Ceremony. Very well done, and one of the neatest parts of it was, when it was all over, the, those of us on stage went out first, and then we aligned ourselves along each side of kind of the walkway out of the gym. And as the, those who participated in the ceremonies came by, we all gave them high fives and clapped for them. That was, I think, a nice touch, that they started that tradition a couple of years ago, apparently. Very cool. May 8th, I attended the 100th Avenue and 92nd Street Functional Study Open Houses, and I attended in the evening Red Cross Day Proclamation by our mayor and the film that they had. Land Use Gala Workshop on the 9th. 10th, I represented council at the Arbor Day Tree Planning Ceremony at Ecole Nouvelle Frontière, and had a GPRTA Board meeting that noon where we started to work on policy revisions. And then I went back here to do a tender Trails and Sidewalks Tender. Also, that evening, went to the Dream House Ribbon Count, Cutting, Counting, at Cutting, at Cutting Ceremony and Reception. May 8th, attended the Conference Board of Canada Presentation by Maryola Fave. Very interesting, very, very interesting. And they're looking at developing data that might be even more useful to mid-sized cities. And so, we were quite interested and gave some input in terms of what kinds of things we might find useful. And then that evening, I brought greetings on behalf of mayor and council to the Northwest Regional Persons with Developmental Disabilities Spring Celebration and Awards Night. Very exciting evening for those who attended with the awards, and they did a karaoke and dance afterwards, which they really enjoyed. And May 12th, actually, I had just read it someplace, but I went to the Mental Health Expo at East Link Center. We had an open house on the 12th, and spent an hour chatting with different booths and people who were there, and I found it really interesting, and pretty well attended, given the weather was getting a little nicer. But, just as a reminder, that that segment of our health services, I think, is really, really important, and we as a community are doing our best by working together to meet the needs of our residents. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Reverend. Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you very much. On May 2nd, I attended the Real Shorts Film Festival screening of Love Notes. It's a collection of short films with the theme of love, and it was a very well organized group of films, and there was many people from council there. On the May 3rd, I attended the United Way Grow with United Breakfast and Program hosted at the Holiday Inn. I also attended the open house for Plus Two Bottle Depot and toured the facility. And on May 4th, I had, was able to go to the opening ceremonies for the Northern Alberta Regional Heritage School Fair held at Teresa Sergeant Hall, and Counselor Lauren Radburn gave a very touching speech to the children that were attending there. On May 5th, the Wapiti Shooters Club hosted the GP Petroleum Association Shotgun Sporting Clays, and there was 250 shooters, which is the largest shooting event ever, one-day shooting event, held in Canada. And it was held here, and I don't know what the economic spinoff was, but they were here for a couple of days anyhow, so there's a number of people with hotels and meals. On May 6th, I attended the finals of the Real Shorts Film Festival, the best of the best, and it was on Sunday evening, and it was a very enjoyable evening with my wife. On May 8th, I attended the open house for the 100th Avenue and 92nd Street redevelopment, Musco CP Park, and thanks to Norman Kyle for doing an excellent job with answering the questions that were given to him at that point. On May 9th, I attended a half-day session with the draft land use bylaw workshop. And on May 10th, in the evening, I attended the Dream Home Open House and Ribbon Cutting, and bought my tickets. May 11th, tender opening, and also, later that night, I attended the Persons with Developmental Disabilities for the Northwest Region of Alberta. There was about 300 young people in attendance. There was many awards given out to many people there, and it was a very touching evening, and opened up my eyes, and it was, I'm glad I went. Later that evening, I went to the Jim Stokes and Carmen Haxsted presentation of their artwork at the new gallery in Grand Prairie, new rebuilt. And on May 12th, I flipped burgers at M&amp;M's for the Crohn's and Colitis Foundation. And today was the first meeting of the Anderson Hall Site Redevelopment, and I attended that today. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. On May 4th, I also attended Northern Alberta Regional Heritage School Fair, and the greetings were very good from Counselor Radburn, when his passion in his life was learning and education, that came out in his greetings at that event. What I noticed quite a bit there was themes from the children were Terry Fox, who's one of my heroes, War of 1812, Vimy Ridge, and About the Beaver. They were two or three different, they were showing the most. May 8th, Stakeholders Open House for 100th Avenue and 92nd Street, I was at as well. As well, May 8th, I brought my two girls, Kinder and Care, to proclamation reading for the Red Cross at the library, and they had a lot of the book to ladies at World War II for the Red Cross. I'm not sure how many, it was between 300 and 600 of them. They went over to World War II from nurses to changing tires to mechanics. And I got through half it, wanted to stay, but I was told it was time to go. So, my four-year-olds, we had to go. On May 9th, I was also attended the draft of the Land Use Bylaw Workshop, and it looks like there's gonna be another one coming up, and there's quite a bit of issues of talking in there, and I look forward to it. And as well, I was on May 11th at a check presentation at East Link Center for Warehouser Canada. They donated $75,000, and I'm hoping that we get the rest that we were hoping for in the next couple of months, from hopefully other businesses in the community as well. Speak to Warehouser, which I'm employed at as well. They employ over 600 people in the area, and this doesn't include subcontractors. And if you add that in, I'm sure it's getting close to 1,000. And they're a big employer in the community and forestry. So, that's everything. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Counselor Wong?
Thank you, Mayor Given. On May 2nd, I was at the Real Shorts Film Festival, and I'm not ashamed to say that I liked short shorts. They were, the films were excellent. I just wanted to congratulate Terry Sureback for another extremely successful festival. And I also want to say thank you to our city manager, Greg Sureback, who takes a portion of his own holiday time out to volunteer for this event. On Thursday, May 3rd, I was also at the United Way Breakfast, and I just wanted to point out one thing there. The City of Grand Prairie is in the top five of organizations that take part in their payroll deduction program. So, anyone out there, or any business out there, can participate in that, and your employees can contribute as little as $1 per paycheck to get the ball rolling on that, and I'm sure that the United Way appreciates every donation that comes their way. On Friday, May 11th, I was also at the art gallery opening, along with Councillors O'Toole, Rice, and Mayor Given. Many people out there, they complemented the facility, which is both a historic building as well as a new gallery. Mayor Given performed the inaugural ribbon cutting, and I was really fortunate to receive a gift from Carmen Haxsted. Carmen donated his Ribbon Seeker Oil on Wood painting to the City of Grand Prairie, and it's one of the first publicly owned pieces of art that the city now has, and I think it's fantastic piece to add to our collection, or to start off our collection. I was wowed by the facility, and so were a lot of people there. I just wanted to commend past councils, staff, the architects, and the contractors who worked on that building, because it is an excellent addition to our city. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Wong. Counselor Rice, you can have a second turn. Sure.
Thank you. I just want to add to that. I just wanted to say that, I guess for me at that opening, it was really exciting to see the new galleries open, but equally important, I think, and more heartwarming, the excitement of the curator, Robert Stephen, as we opened those galleries, left no doubt as to part of the reason, part of the success of that facility is the quality of that facility, but equally important is the passion, the dedication, and the quality of the, of the staff over there. So, I commend him for that.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. I'll move on to my roundtable report. Seeing as a number of the items have been already covered, I'll go through it fairly quickly. On May 2nd, I also attended the opening of the Real Shorts Film Festival, and would like to add my congratulations to Terry and all the rest of the organizers and volunteers for bringing such a high-level international festival to Grand Prairie. On the morning of Thursday, I was also at the Grow United, United Way Breakfast, which was seeking to bring in more employers into their, into their program. On Friday the 4th, I attended and took part in a funding meeting for the County Rec Board. The County of Grand Prairie provides grants to not-for-profits and community organizations through various recreation board agencies across the county, and they've invited me to sit on the one that surrounds the rec boards that represent the areas surrounding the City of Grand Prairie. Later that day, I also had an opportunity to attend and visit at Grand Prairie's mosque, and it was stunning for me to see how many people were there in attendance on a Friday afternoon, and was really actually very, I was very, very surprised by the size of our Islamic community. It was fantastic to see. Had a chance to meet with a number of the people as they came out from their worship session, and it was interesting to hear the concerns. Very common thread, obviously, there were those that were concerned about community safety, given some of the robberies in the last little while. There were others that were interested in recreation facilities, and others that had a lot of comments about what a positive and inclusive community Grand Prairie was. So, it was a great opportunity. The next day, I was, had the pleasure of making the Proclamation of Pallet of Care Day here at City Hall. Did that to help the organizers who were hosting a pallet of care conference in Grand Prairie. I believe they had over 200 attendees, and it was a fantastic event, and happy to see the City of Grand Prairie host that, sorry, the community of Grand Prairie host that. On the 8th, I attended a half-day session at an age-friendly workshop. This is an initiative put on by the provincial government to encourage communities to bring together partners from different community sectors to help their community become recognized as an age-friendly community. As was mentioned before, the next day, there is the Red Cross Day Proclamation and the Conference Board of Canada Presentation. On the 9th, excuse me, actually, oh, sorry, on the same day, the 8th, actually, I had the opportunity to attend in the final day of class at a Roots of Empathy class. My daughter Mila has been participating in the Roots of Empathy program, which is headed up by our city community social development, and this is an opportunity for newborns to go into classes for the first year of their life. And so, Mila had been going into a grade-two class about every month, so they keep track of her development, her growth and development. The intent is to help children understand the needs that we all share as humans, and I can say that it was a, it was a really, it was a lot of fun. I know that my wife Susan and Mila both had a great experience, and I think the kids did as well. So, thanks very much to everybody at Swan Haven School and Miss Baristow's grade-two class for having us in. On Thursday, the 10th, I also attended the ribbon cutting for the Dream Home, and on Friday, the 11th, I was there at the East Link Center to receive the check from Warehouser for their contribution of $75,000. And that evening, I was also at the Jim Stokes and Carmen Haxsted opening at the gallery. I should say, hopefully, that's the, I have a feeling that's gonna be the first of two ribbons that I'm gonna get to cut. The gallery basically has three out of what will eventually be seven gallery spaces open now. There's a large one that many people in the community might be familiar with, and then they open two smaller spaces, but there are still another four spaces yet to be opened when the full opening of the gallery comes, I believe in June, I think is their target. The grand, grand opening will be September. Thanks, Lois. Would remember, remind the community that the Stokes-Haxsted exhibit will be open again later on. I think they've closed a little bit, so they can finish up some final touches. On Saturday, the 12th, I also attended at M&amp;M Meat Shops to do the barbecue flipping, the burger flipping for the Crohn's and Colitis Foundation. And later that afternoon, I spent a little bit of time sitting above a frosty pool of water for the CNIB as part of their community carnival celebration. And I wanted to thank the CNIB for inviting me out. I wanted to thank them for providing warm weather and a nice warm towel afterwards, and also recognize that at least two of our City of Grand Prairie firefighters were there as well, and were willing to get up on top and put themselves in harm's way to help raise funds for the CNIB. And with that, that was my report, and I would call our meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.